And perhaps get in contact with you through the Department of Aging here in Los Angeles and say, "Look, we did something positive."
Absolutely. I mean, it takes a village.
Yes.
And people say, "Oh, you're a young man." Aging is about everybody. We're all doing it.
Yep.
And it affects all of us, okay? So I want to, really, that's what we're trying to produce content that everybody could enjoy and that could involve the whole family.
Right.
Because I don't think these things occur in isolation.
I agree with you.
That being said, we want to know people doing exciting things, particularly with these segments on physical activity and exercise.
Yes.
And that would be great if they could call in and tell us and we could get out there and check it out and hopefully get them involved in guiding the process.
Well, I agree. And it's so important, if people have a new spark, they've found a new kind of league or a social setting where seniors really thrive, they can contact you. Dr. Scott Kaiser at the Department of Aging, right here in Los Angeles, the number's on your screen. And we do want to hear from you. So looking ahead with the technology, is this going to help lower the potential costs of an aging population?
You know, absolutely, I think there are a lot of things that can improve quality and be cost-saving. Absolutely. That's not my area of expertise, but that's something that we'll always be conscious of. That's just a reality in healthcare and society. Things have gotten, healthcare costs have gotten out of control.
Hopefully, have they?
So there's no question that promoting health and fitness through physical activity and exercise can be cost-saving. But that's really not the focus.
Right.
We're really about quality, and hopefully somebody else can pick up that piece of the puzzle. For now, we just want to work with what's already out there. I mean, we have evidence-based programs that already exist in L.A. to promote physical wellness, to get people moving. And so we just want to get people moving and keep them moving and do it together.
We have had several shows about the danger of falls, for example, and how just simple fixes within the home can help prevent the beginning of the health problem for people.
Right.
Many times, it's a broken hip, tripping over a cord that should have been tucked away.
Right. You know, I mean, again, once again, you hit the nail on the head because, I mean, as a geriatrician, I spent a large portion of my training was specifically dedicated to helping care for people who had hip fractures.
Right.
And the great news is there are treatments that are very effective and the surgery's getting better and better, the surgical medical management during surgery. But that's something that's preventable.
Yes.
And you're right on the money because there are already evidence-based programs, there's matter of balance, it's available, it's in our city, you know, and that's the kind of thing where we want to see who's offering that program, showcase it, get people involved. They teach you those things about how to modify your home environment, how to assess your own risk, how to strengthen to reduce your risk of fall. And it's never too late to build more muscle.
Well, that's an important consideration. It is not too late. I am so excited that you were part of this program and will be bringing important information to our viewers and the caregivers and family members who need to educate themselves as well. Dr. Scott Kaiser, thank you so much for coming in and sharing a bit of your background. It's important for people to know, the Department of Aging is filled with people who, like Scott, are dedicated to the affairs of seniors. I've really enjoyed this visit and we look forward to seeing you next time on Aging Well in L.A.
Hi, I am Los Angeles City Attorney Carmen Trutanich. I am here to talk about the problem of counterfeiting and piracy. It goes beyond the manufacturer and sale of cheap unauthorized goods. Such crimes impact legitimate businesses, employment, and even public safety. The money a consumer pays for a counterfeit or pirated item may very well be financing even more serious criminal activity, like gang crime. I'm doing everything in my power to protect the citizens of Los Angeles, but I also need your help. Please do not purchase these items. Together, we will combat these illegal practices and make Los Angeles a better and safer city. Thank you.
Did you know that more than 80% of false alarms are related to preventable user errors, such as open windows or pets? Any motion can trigger an alarm. Thousands of police patrol hours are wasted investigating alarm reports that turn out to be false alarms. That's crime-fighting time lost. Make sure your alarm is working properly.
Driver, over here. Sir, remove your shoes. Sir, remove your shoes and stand here. You have to focus when crossing a street. Every day, pedestrians are seriously injured or even killed because they're not paying attention when they cross or because drivers fail to yield. A pedestrian always has the right of way. Pay attention, obey the law, or deal with the consequences.
Look before you cross. Cars can't see you.
There are heroes among us. They don't fly or bend steel or ride off into the sunset. They simply volunteer to look after someone else's health by providing comfort, lending a hand, or simply keeping us on track. Everyone's health needs a hero. Who will you look out for?
Find out how you can participate in improving our health. Visit iparticipate.org.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamerk Park. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
This is the Los Angeles City Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. You can watch us via cable, Channel 35, or you can visit our website, call area code 213-621-CITY, or you can go to one of our remote locations. One is located in San Pedro, the other is located in Van Nuys. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the president of the Los Angeles City Council. This meeting is now in session. City Clerk or Madam Clerk, this is my first day, so be gentle with me. So please, call the roll.
Alacorn, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Corret, McCory, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Weston, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First item of business.
Approve the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Labange seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. McCoryan moves, Mr. Corret second. Good morning. At this point in time, if we could all rise for our flag salute, will be led by President Emeritus Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much. If you could please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, let's try to run through the agenda.
Items 1 through 11 are Department of Building and Safety liens noticed for public hearing. The department reports that items 2 and 4 may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, let's open and close the hearing. Well, no, first, any cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there's cards on items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 11.
Okay, thank you. Let's open and close the public hearing on the remaining items. Members, any specials? See, any hearing, none? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next.
Items 12 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, specials? Mr. Garcetti?
14 and 15, please, Mr. President.
14 and 15. Mr. Englander?
Item 12, please.
Richard?
17. Oh, I get a Richard.
You're 17?
Yeah.
17? I had the request to continue that one week.
To what?
I had a request for one-week continuance on that.
Oh, that'll be fine.
Okay. Can we continue 17 to one week then, please?
Without objection.
Thank you.
That I will be continued until January 10th, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, see, no other specials. We can open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next?
Items 18 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Any cards?
There are cards on items 18, 22, 24, 26, 28, 30, 31, and 35.
Members, any specials? Mr. Garcetti?
If we could continue item 35 until the 17th of this month, January 17th, please?
Without objection. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, so we want to open, we want to close the hearing on these items.
Mr. President, Mr. President?
Wait, Ms. McCoryan?
Number 37, special, please.
Okay. Again, like I said, will, any cards? Did I already ask that?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so then, at this time, if there are no more specials, let's just open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where now, Madam Clerk?
That brings us to public comment for items not on the agenda or items called special.
What's the troop number? What's the troop number?
Mr. Labange?
Before we get right in there, can we introduce some fine, young people and their parents? Troop 311, Boy Scouts of America. Give them a hand. Welcome to the John F. Rall Chambers. And make sure you visit the Tom Bradley Tower on top of the City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, what we're going to do, that brings us to general public comment. I'm going to call up three people at a time. And when I look up to the podium, I expect to see three people. We'll start off with Sean Murphy, Mr. Herman, and Daniel Gus. Please come forward. Hold tight, Mr. Murphy. I'm looking for Mr. Herman.
It's okay.
Mr. Herman? Okay, Mr., oh, okay, I just needed to see you. Sean, go right ahead.
Good morning, Mr. New President. Madam Chair and his pro tem. Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a good holiday. I want to discuss city business. Our streets need to be repaid, the library should be open, and I hope we don't have any more layoffs, Mr. New President, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Herman?
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
Today, we understand that eminent domain has abused its power. How has it abused its power? Through blight, through rundown conditions in our communities. In particular, I'm speaking on behalf of those people in Boyle Heights. The CRA, L.A., East Side Region has refused to be open and courteous to its public on having open comments. There has been no quorum, there has been no outreach, and they're in violation of the Brown Act of the community. Also, many projects that have been highlighted in the L.A. Times and the news regarding the CRA's, what, corruption, gross spending, and poor accountability? What have you done, council members? What challenge have you taken, Mr. Weezer, to say to the CRA, "We want these projects completed, we want more jobs, and we want to improve the community by bringing the economy back"? By how, Mr. Weezer? More jobs. I have not seen not less or no more than 100. There should be thousands of jobs open at this point. And so, as the L.A. Times pointed out, property cannot be seized simply on the terms of it being private or so forth. No, it can only be taken away by inhabability and by the fact that there are people who don't care about communities and allow for vacant lots, allow for abandoned buildings, allow for blight with graffiti and vandalism, and the worst condition of all, and I invite all of you, I invite all of you into Boyle Heights, East Side, 10 minutes from here, to see the rundown conditions of CD14. And where's the mayor, running around saying he's bringing jobs from out of state? Wrong. I ask and demand a motion that the CRA be accountable and there be more presentation here at Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Daniel Gus, my friend.
Happy New Year, Mr. Wesson, City Council. Mr. Wesson never let a little dog hair get in the way of saving an animal's life, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to your leadership in the coming years. We can't go into the new year without, once again, going over very precisely why Commissioner Ruth Ann Secunda must be removed from Animal Services, so please take notes. Ms. Secunda, while Commissioner didn't pay her animal license fees, three dogs, six years, she ripped off the city for nearly $400. When you don't turn in your animal license fees, it means you don't turn in your rabies certificates. Rabies certificates is a public safety and public health issue. She committed that violation nine times, so now we have 27 violations. Ms. Secunda didn't take any action on this until she was caught violating the leash law in the beach areas. That's 29 violations. She tried to use her position to influence the officer to not write the ticket. She tried to use her position to get Brenda Barnett to drop the ticket, and when that didn't work, she didn't show up in court to face the citation for an Animal Services violation. And you know what happens when you don't show up in court, an arrest warrant is issued. Ms. Secunda has missed more Animal Services Commission meetings than all of the other commissioners. And when she did attend, it was chaotic because they had to violate the Brown Act to find out why she committed the violations and didn't show up in court. All of the other commissioners knew what she was doing, and all of the other commissioners ignored the concern. But the worst part is that Ms. Secunda voted to reduce or eliminate the penalties for the violations she was committing. She has to go. Please find a nice representative of the Latino community, because there are no Latinos on the commission. The real problem is up in the mayor's office with Jim Bickhart. Mr. Bickhart, for all you aspiring mayors, Ms. Perry, is that it's a witch hunt. There should not be a witch hunt when facts of violations come up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Dr. Tom Williams, John Walsh, and Nadine Hayes, please come forward. Ms. Hayes? Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council. Is there a CRA? I hope not. I hope it's dead, gone extinct. The concept is good, but the implementation, especially in the Prop 13 environment, was terrible. We have a CRA project. It's one mile from the closest CRA location on Huntington Drive. It costs $400 a square foot to build affordable housing with free land. Isn't there something about fraud, abuse, waste? Let's get rid of CRA officially and try to figure out how to rebuild less of a monster, something that the City Council can review and control or at least manage. But the CRA has been a terrible disaster for the city of Los Angeles. Fraud, abuse, waste. $400 a square foot is a little bit excessive for affordable housing. Then, they said, "Oh, there will be a lottery for 24 units." But did they tell even the Neighborhood Council? Did they post it on boards at the location? No. So we don't even know who's going to move into them. The agent was from Al Hamra City, not from L.A. So total lack of transparency, accessibility, fraud, abuse, waste, seems similar. So let's officially get rid of the current CRA, L.A., and start trying to build something that will work for the community of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Walsh, happy new year.
Happy New Year. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Google us at Walsh Confidential. Thank, thank the sheriffs, because we're safer in Los Angeles today because the sheriffs arrested the mad Hollywood arsonist under the nose of the LAPD. Didn't we hear anything from the mayor during this entire thing? For days after days, he disappeared. I think he was in bed with somebody from Channel 4. But what happens when the sheriffs, a reserve officer, finds and arrests the mad Hollywood arsonist? The mayor's out there taking credit for it. Let me tell you what the sheriffs say about Chief Beck. They call him a Hollywood cop, a Keystone Cop. You did nothing. And where was Garcetti, our City Councilman? We didn't hear anything. I'm telling you right now. And where was Charlie Beck when he was arrested at 3:00 a.m.? He was sleeping. And what was he going to do the next day? He was going to go out and ride his horse in the Rose Parade. And that's where the media had to go, and he took credit, when the credit is due, to Sheriff Lee Baca. And, you know, they should charge you. In other words, they should bill you for the work. I got a robo-call. Everybody in Hollywood got an emergency call telling us that we were in an emergency and watch out for the mad Hollywood arsonist. Plenty of phone calls, 52 arsons, more arsons than happened during the entire riot for Rodney King here. And what did we hear from the city? Nothing. Thank you, Lee Baca. Thank you very much for what's happening. And you know what? If it hadn't been for Lee Baca and it hadn't been for the sheriffs, the mad Hollywood arsonist would still be on the street. He lived in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org, you want to find out what's happening? Come to me.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I'm going to ask, Mr. President, that we be briefed, because there was great cooperation between the county and the city and the success of capturing this individual later on. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Ms. Hayes?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm the one that am giving you all those goody, goody little treats. I actually was here on Thursday before Christmas. They looked a lot nicer then. They were stuck in my car and got kind of tousled around, and my dolly ended up, not a dolly-dolly, but moving dolly, ended up falling on top of them. But I did put them in the freezer, so they should be fresh, they should taste well. And I do ask you to please read the information that was included in them. And then there's an extra handout that I did make for you as well. I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak. I haven't done this very much, but I've gotten very political in my old age, and so I'm starting to get used to this. I just wanted to let you know that the Occupy movement really is a good movement, as much as the media... as the media tends to demonize us. And you probably, I don't know if you've ever seen this, if you wanna see a close-up, I'll be happy to show it to you. I actually am gonna be out on the stairs on Spring Street on Tuesdays, if any of you would like to talk to me more. I've got lots of ideas. I wanted to also thank Mayor Villarogosa for offering the occupiers quite a bit of space at a very, very reasonable price that happened to make CBS News. However, what did not make the news was that shortly after it made the news, he rescinded the offer. I don't know about you, but in my books, to my children, I call that Indian giving, which I don't think was very fair. But I would like to take them up on the offer again, maybe work with somebody in the council to try to get some of the homeless off the street to help, try to help improve the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have some Cub Scouts or something in the back of the room. Can we all give our future leaders for tomorrow a round of applause for visiting us? Thank you, young people, for coming. Now, my dear friend Chuck Tenon, Donna Peerman in the Valley, and Arnold Sacks, if you please come forward. Mr. Sacks? When I call your name, if you're not up there, you forfeit your time. There's no grand entrances anymore. So I wanna see Chuck Peerman, and you know I have a soft spot in my heart for you. Chuck Tenon, Donna Peerman, and Arnold Sacks. Chuck?
Good morning and Happy New Year, council members and Council President Wesson. While the day has finally come and Chuck Tenon is here to see Herb on the bench, it will be in good hands. With his experience as state assemblyman, chairman of the Housing Committee, and his committee of Eric Garcetti, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, and Tony Cardenas have helped a lot of people with housing issues, like first-time homebuyers achieve the American dream of owning an affordable home by getting the mayor to sign in $5 million in just 12 days. He was instrumental in the passage of a higher renter relocation amount of $9,000 and $17,000, and he has done many great programs for the kids in this city. Herb is well-qualified as a leader. Herb carries a big, big, big stick, and don't ever think that he won't use it for the good of the people of LA. So we must all support this man, because collective efforts can go a long way with positive results. And to Eric Garcetti, you can be the president of My Big Fish Music anytime. And speaking about hands, I'd like to see Eric play the piano sometime. He once told me that if he didn't run for city council, he would have been a classical pianist. May God bless all the city council members in moving this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Donna Peerman?
Okay, I'm here. Can't see me. Hello?
Now I can see you.
Yeah. Anyway, Mr. Wesson, welcome. Mr. Wesson, Wesson, you have big shoes to fill taking over for Mr. Garcetti. We should have a chambers named after John Farrow. Let's put on the agenda, have an Eric Garcetti horseshoe. Anyway, we need not to allow, we need to stop having coed colleges and death taxes in the CRA. We do need to have the CRA projects to be finished. We need to encourage private industry coming in and fixing our community. You would not see corruption, indifference, no outreach problems. We need to get rid of the CRA entirely. They are the ones who have fraud, abuse, and waste. I do believe certainly we can have a private industry do a lot better and a smaller amount of money. And I wanna thank the sheriff for getting that arsonist. My condolences to Ada Berry, who died in the hands of a psycho, I believe, in Hollywood. Citizens should be prepared to arm themselves. Police would be the first to take care of it, but you need to protect yourself if necessary if police aren't there to protect you. Need to have cell phones and people, and cell phones and people in homes and apartments with fire extinguishers to help out in case there's, again, arsonists. We need to protect ourselves and be there because to help, perhaps, the fire department. We need to stop, we need to get rid of the CRA because they are taking away from the city employees because there are a lot more money allotted to them. So we wouldn't have any problem, we would have a lot less problems in the city, and things could be fixed, streets could be fixed, sidewalks could be fixed if the CRA is gone. Thank you.
Ms. Peerman, did Ms. Fogler get another cat? Could you make sure I get that information? Thank you. Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Arnold Sacks. Interesting that Donna Peerman should ask for a horseshoe for Councilman Garcetti. I once asked at the county board of supervisors, I suggested that in lieu of all their honorifics, they should put their faces on money. And not just their faces, but posing them on a, like a horseback, like Dudley Doerright used to do. And then people would say, "Boy, those county board of supervisors are really something. They put a horse's ass on their money." That's a different story. Somebody mentioned something about the protesters, and the Person of the Year, Time Magazine picked the protesters. And I'm wondering if any of you saw, happened to see the History Channel mini-series about the Vietnam War. It was on, I think, in the middle of November. It was like a six-part series. And I happened to be watching it and just looking at the old photos, and one of the photos showed some protesters marching in Washington, and one of the signs being held up, this is from 1972, is "Don't Fight Wall Street's War." How funny, things change. The more they change, the more they remain the same. That was '72. And this story from the Daily Breeze, "What's Behind the Lackluster Council?" You know what's behind the lackluster council? Lackluster reporting. And it's about time that we had some people who come forward to report exactly what that goes on at council chambers. The amount of time wasted on insignificant action, and the amount of time wasted on bluster from the councilmen and no motion being made, such as with the Public Works Department and the advertising fiasco on the park benches, or the 8% discount for the local businesses when the city charter wasn't addressed, but there was hours of conversation regarding it. We need better reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, and again, it's good to see you again. Members, we're joined by some of your, a former colleague of yours and the person that got me started in this business, my first boss, and that's a former state senator and former council member of the great 10th District, Nate Holden. If you give Nate Holden a round of applause. Okay, now Cheryl Eickley, Tut Haze, and in the Valley, Mr. Nightingale.
Hi, thank you. My name is Cheryl Eickley. I live in District 4, and I am a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I speak for myself today. Happy New Year. I hope you guys had as good of a New Year's celebration as I did. And congratulations, Mr. President, on your new position. And I am going to really miss President Garcetti as president, but maybe he may be Mayor Garcetti soon, so. I saw in the paper this morning, the LA Times, about the cost that Occupy Los Angeles had in regards to the lawn, and I saw over the holiday break the cost that Occupy Los Angeles had to the city. I didn't, in any of the reporting, see a request for a report by Councilmember Awar Cone in regards to the cost of the illegal banking activities mentioned at all. It's kind of a shame that that couldn't have been included in any of the reporting. And as far as City Hall lawn, I thought the city had a program where they were paying people not to have grass because watering grass is expensive in a drought, so I'm a little confused about that. I am looking forward to continuing to work with the city on a variety of issues that happen to affect the 99%, and I'm looking forward to continuing with the responsible banking ordinance in the new year and have some concerns about it. And the other issue that I'm really gonna focus on in the new year is foreclosures. And on Wednesday, we are going to be in South Central at a home of a 79-year-old retired schoolteacher who house has been foreclosed upon by Bank of America, and we're gonna do what we can to rally people around this family. And we've already done it over the holiday break with less than 12 hours' notice. We were able to help a senior, a disabled senior, save his home from being auctioned off on the foreclosure auction, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Eickley. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilman Wesson, on your ascendency to the presidency. I'm sure that it's gonna be good despite the fact that I'm heard that you're gonna crack down on overly dramatic presidents. And I'm also here to point out, you have no bling-bling diamond in your teeth. So my concern is a million potholes. The mayor says he's going to do that. He hasn't achieved it yet. I'd like to direct the council's attention to the east side of Western Boulevard, south of Venice, down to McDonald's. When buses go in that number two lane, it's like riding a stagecoach. We have seen residential streets being resurfaced, not repaved, resurfaced. I think that Street Services can take care of those kinds of streets right now. Now, it's a deep impression in the street. It's down from the asphalt down to the formerly concrete. That's about a six-inch drop. That's why the buses rock so severely when they go through those potholes. Now, the other concern is the fact we have finally come to our senses on trash containers on the sidewalk. Now they're metal, they're steel, and they're being stolen and recycled. I have got photographs of some of our containers in recycling centers, and I shall try to present them to Street Services and sanitation. And I've talked to the recycling agencies that have taken these things in and pointed out it's a crime for them to receive them. So they set them aside, there are three there now, and they will pick them up later. But we have to recognize that anything that can be recycled, from copper wire to our containers on the streets, will be taken. So we have to make sure that recycling centers are allergic to that and are prosecuted in the event they take care of material that is a criminal activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. That brings us to Mr. Nightingale in the Valley.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I'll tell you, this thing about, you know, the gays, the lesbians, and so forth, it's gonna be taught in our schools. I mean, what right do they have, per se, to teach this, that it's up to the parents and so forth? I don't understand. Like I said before, I had a cousin that was a lesbian, and she, it was years ago, before this even started, back in the 60s and 70s, and that stuff, and that. And we brought her into our family, there was no problems and so forth. But when you tell people that this is what's gonna happen, that's just taking your rights away. I just don't understand it. And then this, and, and, don't get me wrong, they can do what they want, but then when they force themselves onto you, for instance, that child that killed that other boy up in Ventura, that was a tragedy. But he wouldn't leave that other kid alone. I'm sorry, but when I was a kid and all that, somebody did that, I tell them, "Leave me alone," not, then obviously I had to slap him, slap him in the, slap him silly a little bit. But, oh, you can't do that now, because that's violence. You can't do that. But what is these people the right to do?
I don't believe this is within the jurisdiction of the City of Los Angeles City Council.
It's because the city is letting this happen. You let it come into the school board.
Mr. Keep it, look, I wanna make sure you can talk. Hold his time for right now, but don't yell and scream, just keep it down and try to make it where it falls within the jurisdiction of the city. So continue, Mr. Nightingale.
I don't need the city attorney to come in, that's the problem. The law comes in all the time. The problem is that the city board is letting this all happen. You people have to do with the city of Los Angeles, and that is with the LAUSD. And now they're letting it come into it. You people didn't fight against it, you let it all happen, and you're taking the rights away from the parents of teaching them. Granted, a lot of the parents don't teach them much to what's going on, but it's sickening to what's going on in the school board, and then they want more money, and more money, and more money.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, Mr. Garcetti?
Briefly, and I know Mr. Rosenthal would probably stand as well, when we've had incidents in the past, Ms. Perry and others, people have the right to say whatever they want, but I think it's important to always stand up and speak out against. Imagine if for a moment we had somebody arguing that we shouldn't be teaching black history or that we shouldn't be teaching Latino history or the history of the feminist movement, and I just stand up in strong opposition to what we just heard. I think if you write gay and lesbian, transgendered, bisexual people out of our history, then they become silent and missing. And not only is this a great move forward in the new year, yes, we were proud to support it, and it is something that all Californians can be proud to see in our schools finally. And that sort of bigotry that we hear sometimes that leads people to believe that anybody, because they're gay, are sexual predators and other things like that, there's no place for that, and I wanted to speak out against it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Let's close the public comments section. Mr. Rosenthal?
Just a quick comment, and I appreciate Mr. Garcetti saying it. Look, I stand up for my basic civil and human rights every minute of every day. God created all people, and we all should be treated equally and fairly. I wanna start the new year off on a very positive note, that we wanna be positive about everything, and we wanna make the world a better place in 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Madam Clerk, I think we should start at the first-held item.
That would be item one, call special for cards.
Pardon my dramatic entrance. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, Walsh Confidential, 1 million successful server requests last year. Number one, we're 100% in favor of the hearing protest. A little later, you're gonna see some people coming up here, and we agree with them. Anytime someone comes and protests the city, we support those who are protesting. Hollywood, just like Occupy. HollywoodHighlands.org, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no members in the queue, why don't we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, before, I wanna take, at the request of Mr. Kukorian, item 37 out of order, so if we could read the item.
Mr. President, item 37. It's a resolution relative to declaring January 2012 as Los Angeles Arts Month, Discover the Arts LA in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for your indulgence in hearing this matter out of order. Members, we all know, and in fact, the world all knows, that for the better part of the last century, Los Angeles has really been the creative capital of this country and has inspired the world with its contribution to the arts. LA's creative economy is, after tourism, the second-largest business sector in this region, and we have cultural offerings here that include exceptional individual artists that are known globally, who are involved in the film, performing, and visual arts world. We have world-class museums and performing arts venues, but we also have neighborhood-based heritage festivals, thriving commercial art galleries, and world-renowned music, recording, television, and film industries, of course, as well as first-quality arts education in many of our schools. Not enough, sadly, and we need to do much better to make sure that our arts education is available broadly throughout our city. But I'm very pleased to present this resolution, which will declare the 2012 Los Angeles Arts Month and Discover the Arts LA, which is a promotion that's a collaboration between local arts organizations, arts leaders, artists, additional committed public and private partners, who will help us to drive the brand awareness of Los Angeles as a cultural capital and inspire our residents and our visitors to go out and experience all the arts and cultural offerings that this city has to offer. So I'm very pleased to introduce today some arts leaders who are really making, on very limited resources, helping Los Angeles to maintain its rightful place as the cultural capital of our country. And I'm pleased to introduce the General Manager of Cultural Affairs, Olga Gray English, Yor Chiang. York Chang, the President of the Cultural Affairs Commission, Michael McDowell, the Senior Director of Cultural Tourism for L.A. Inc., and Ryan Zinger, who's a staff consultant for L.A. Arts Month. And I'm pleased to introduce Olga, if you'd like to introduce this matter. And members, when they're done, I respectfully ask for your aye vote in support of this resolution.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kukorian, and Happy New Year to all of you, Councilmembers. We're so pleased to be here for the fourth time in a row to celebrate L.A. Arts Month and Discover the Arts L.A. This has been a fabulous effort, which in its short four-year history, has made headlines that promote the arts and culture for all of the residents of our community, as well as the over 26 million visitors who come to visit us each year. January, because it's right after the holiday, traditionally is one of the slowest months of the year in terms of people going out and buying tickets and enjoying the arts. And so, this promotion, which partners very, very heavily with L.A. Inc., and I'll let Mike McDowell say a few words in a minute, brings sponsorship opportunities to help families and individuals, visitors and residents alike, to take advantage of the plethora of arts opportunities that are in this community. So, I very much encourage you to be part of this. We're doing a press conference and celebration for the arts community in January 30th of this month to kick it off, and that's when all of the hundreds of thousands of dollars of free tickets and cultural events will be available to the public. So, I encourage you to be part of that and to tell your constituents about it. We're sending out press releases, et cetera. And I want to thank Councilmember Kukorian again for sponsoring this. I'm going to turn it over for a brief minute to the President of the Cultural Affairs Commission, John, New York Chang.
Hello, and greetings and Happy New Year to the council and esteemed members of the council. I'm here representing the Cultural Affairs Commission, expressing our support for L.A. Arts Month. This is an important initiative that was started four years ago, and it's really exemplary of a certain kind of private, public, and institutional partnership, where the city really functions as a convener to bring together disparate parts of the arts community for a common purpose, and that's to focus on Los Angeles's history, which is the subject of a massive initiative by the Getty Center. So, this is a perfect year for this particular Arts Month, to focus on Los Angeles, but really to focus on the history of what has brought us to this point of becoming a creative capital of an international community. So, there are over 60 organizations participating in the Pacific Standard Time Initiative, and L.A. Arts Month is really a way to frame this current initiative that's ongoing and will have a number of major, high-profile events happening in January as well. So, appreciate Councilmember Kukorian for sponsoring this resolution and his very support, and we ask for everybody, all the other councilmember's support for this resolution as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Michael McDowell of L.A. Inc. to talk a little bit more about the L.A. Arts Month and its impact in Los Angeles.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm delighted that this is the fourth year that L.A. Inc., the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau, has worked with the City Department of Cultural Affairs to emphasize not only the arts, but the importance of arts in tourism, as Mr. Kukorian said, our largest industry. About 50% of our 26 million visitors get their information of when to come to L.A., why to come to L.A., and what to do in L.A. from people who live in L.A. And so, under Olga Gray's leadership, the L.A. Arts Month program has really been to stimulate Angelenos, not only to go to their favorite museum or performing arts group during this special time of year, but to discover a new museum or arts group that they've never been to before. And that's really important in getting Angelenos to help us promote the city as one of the world's premier cultural capitals. And just to leave you with one example of the impact of the arts in promoting tourism, at the beginning of the Pacific Standard Time Celebration of L.A. Art that Mr. Chang referenced, we worked with our museums and hotels to put together a special hotel package for visitors. And working with our partner Expedia Online, in the first two months alone, we sold 7,000 room nights in the City of Los Angeles. That's $1.4 million in hotel revenue and just under $200,000 in TOT alone. So, you can see the impact of the arts in helping us to promote the city as a major tourism destination. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Any closing remarks?
Mr. Labange, did you want to, Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I want to give credit to Gail Roskey, who brought it to the city first. Gail Roskey, a commissioner, said other communities are supporting the arts. And as Mr. Rosendahl will tell you, what the arts does for Venice and the West Side, he could talk the rest of the day. Arts are real important. So, now it becomes formalized. Now it becomes part of our blood. I mentioned Tom Bradley earlier, as well as John Farrell, the champions of the Olympic Games, they had Olympic Art Festival, which really started the movement, which I believe we have 11 or 12 major new museums because of the Olympics and what came out of that. So, this is just another effort, and I'm very proud of the work, especially proud of Los Angeles Inc., L.A. Inc., which Mike McDowell is focusing on this in the Los Angeles, no, the New York Times, they had a story, 50 million people come to New York to see art, 50 million people. And I know we don't have that number, but we should, and Pacific Standard Time is a start. And humanities is what's going to transform us. If today we haven't experienced in nature, or experienced in reading, or listening to music, we'll be better people than if we are just doing the hum of today. So, the great thing about a council here is you have a baton, and Mr. Kukorian is like a track star. He took that baton up, and he's running laps around me as we promote the arts. So, it's very important to promote the arts in L.A. Art Month, and I just want to stand to rise, all of us, because each of us should have an art deputy, not for full-time, because we can do it, but who helps promote the arts and community. It's a great way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr., and see, I think you've started something here, Tom, because now we have Mr. Rosendahl? No, Mr. Labange, just stay where you are.
Yeah, we want to make a big deal, other than to say the arts are as critical as anything else we do in life, obviously. He called out the Venice situation, but it's the general sensibilities of Southern California. We are the megalopolis of the earth, we're the microcosm of the planet, we have everybody here in large numbers, we have the best weather in America at this time of year. So, it's a no-brainer, as Thomas, Chair of the Committee that oversees tourism, it's a big tourist grab, and for each dollar spent on arts, we get multiple dollars back in whatever aspect that is, from a hotel room, to eating out, to flying to town to come visiting. And God knows, the arts transcend everybody and becomes part of a cultural reality for all of humanity to get under the umbrella of art. So, whatever we can do as a city to enhance that, not only does it create a revenue stream, but it's a healthy part of human nature in its totality of becoming what it needs to become. Art is an essential ingredient. So, thank you, everybody, for everybody bringing this to our attention at the beginning of the new year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian, why don't you land this plane?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. President, thank you. And this is important, colleagues. Mr. Labange and I were at the Barnstall Art Center for Civic Virtues, which is an exhibition part of the Pacific Standard Time. And I learned that a member of this council, just a few decades ago, sought to have this city ban modern art from the City of Los Angeles for fear that it was subversive. So, how far we've come, from that point to now being able to stand as a council and declare January to be L.A. Arts Month, I appreciate my colleagues' comments, and I ask for your aye vote.
Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, you know, I want to take a point of personal privilege here, and I want to deal with items that were called special by members. So, why don't we take these out of order? We'll do items 12, 14, and 15. So, if you could read those items.
Item 12 is an Audit and Government Efficiency Committee Report relative to the review of city contract with Motorola that was released on December 10, 2009. And item 14 is a Jobs and Business Development Committee Report relative to development of an online survey on how the city can best aid businesses from all the nine business classes.
Okay, Mr. Englander, I think, didn't you hold 12?
Sure.
So, we're on 12.
Happy to take 12. Do we have anybody from the department here, from GSD, that can speak to this? So, we had this in committee, crickets, we had this in committee once, and then it came back a second time. We had it in council, and it's coming back again, and we still don't have anybody from the department to answer any questions on $4 million in expenditure. So, I'll ask that we table this yet again till tomorrow, until we get somebody from the department, hopefully the General Manager, that can answer the questions.
No, I think he's here right now.
Oh, fantastic, excellent, okay. So, my questions were on, this came up under an audit, and in the audit, it found that this was, well, if you could explain it to us before I ask any questions, perhaps not all the members were following this in the committee, and also the general public, so they can follow it as well. But if you can walk us through what the audit found in terms of the freight charges on the piggyback contract, explain what a piggyback contract is, and the benefits, and the weaknesses of doing that as well, and then we'll get into, if we could, I've got a lot of questions regarding, not so much the freight charges that we reimburse for, but about or approximately $4 million in purchases that were never approved, and I still don't know what those were for, and have we ever got the money back? So, that's what I wanted to try to get into, and we've never gotten those answers in committee.
Okay. Concerning the $4 million, what we have to do, I really didn't particularly come, but I'll have staff come back later, and we'll either meet with you and give you more specifics on the $4 million. Concerning the freight, there were some particular freight charges that the city was charged for, that we should not have been charged for, and that the controller looked at the particular charges and asked us to go back and work with Rolla Motor, with the particular company, to get the charges reimbursed. So, what we did after meeting a number of times with the contractor, and also with the different committees, we went back to Motorola and explained to them, based on the contract, that was piggybacked from the county, that we should not have paid for those. And they agreed to reimburse us, I think it was for about $4,500, and they've cut a check back to the city, reimbursing us for those costs. The advantage of having a piggyback contract is that you really do not have to go through and really invent the wheel again. There's particular services that a lot of different municipalities or government agencies have out there that different cities can use, and by doing that, we can save a tremendous amount of money on a lot of products, because, you know, you have the federal government, the state government, different cities that piggyback on these particular contracts, and we can get a real good deal on these particular items when we piggyback versus going out on a contract on our own, where there's larger volumes and there's bigger savings there.
So, this sounds to me like a diseconomy's of scale, not an economies of scale.
Right.
Where we have a piggyback contract that turned into a hog, and pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered, and that's exactly what's happened in this case. So, what happened, is that, I'm trying to figure this out, is we've got this economies of scale where we should be saving money, and we've negotiated the same terms with the county for goods and services. In this case, it happens to be Motorola.
Right.
They charged us for freight, which it set in the contract they shall not do.
Correct.
We caught it in audit, we got a check back for $4,500.
Correct.
What was more fascinating about this, though, was there's $4 million in goods or services that were procured that were against the contract, in other words, not allowed, under the piggy-get-back contract. What were those goods and services? Where is that $4 million? How is it that GSD or the department actually purchased $4 million worth of goods and services they weren't allowed to, and we don't know whatever happened? We keep getting back to the fact that we got the $4,500 back.
Correct.
That's fantastic. We've got $4 million that is unaccounted for.
Correct.
We're on the same agenda today. We're trying to figure out how to come up with $1 million for the neighborhood council elections.
Correct.
We've got, we're looking at millions of dollars, and who knows what we've spent, quite frankly, on trying to find this arsonist, and thank God we did.
Correct.
On restoring the lawn at City Hall. I mean, all these funds on top of a $76 million structural deficit that we're facing, just finishing this year off, and not even looking at next year's fiscal deficit, which is well over $250 million. So, with all of that combined, there's $4 million here on the table. Nobody's yet been able to address where we've spent it, are we getting it back, and how did somebody in a department, as far as I'm concerned, illegally purchase goods and services that were not part of a contract? And what now are, are we still doing this?
Correct.
What has changed in policy with these piggyback contracts? So, all this has been exposed, and none of it's been answered.
Okay.
So, should we come back tomorrow and hold this?
Let's come back tomorrow. I can have the staff to come back specifically, explain to you exactly what those items are, what the $4 million entail, exactly who purchased it, and what the issues are, and we can take care of it for you tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Englander, you want us to hold this over and bring it back to council tomorrow?
Until we can get the answers, yes, please.
You don't want to have your staff?
And he's ready to do it tomorrow. Our staff will come back with those answers tomorrow.
Okay, so then, without objection, we'll continue this until tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to item 14. Mr. Garcetti, is Mr. Garcetti available?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
You called that special?
Yes, just briefly, colleagues, I ask for your support today. As Chair of the Jobs Committee, one of the things that I'm trying to do and to work with our business community on is figuring out a little bit more directly from our businesses, how we do a business in the City of Los Angeles. At a time when our unemployment rate is about 14%, and the city is in one of its worst economic downturns in history, we're looking to the private sector to create jobs, but it's those local businesses, those business owners and entrepreneurs who hire Angelenos who are going to play a critical role. We've seen in the past that the best thing we can do is to start with some research and to find out from businesses in all business categories, small, medium, and large, proactively seek their advice in how we can do our business better. And we're going to be looking at surveying them through the mail and online to get important feedback on the needs of business leaders that make decisions every day. Sometimes people say, oh, we had this debate on gross receipts tax here a few weeks ago. Is it the gross receipts tax that's helping and hurting you? Is it building and safety departments helping or hurting you? Is it the regulatory environment in California in general? What is it, and what can we do to knock down some of those barriers, reduce some of the impediments to growth, and to make sure, especially in the new economy, where we're moving increasingly from manufacturing to service, how Los Angeles can position itself to aid in job creation? So, this motion today instructs the Office of Finance to work with the CLA and our Jobs Committee to develop an online survey that can also be taken out. And I encourage you, colleagues, to do this with your local businesses as well, whenever you meet with your chambers and other folks, to take the survey out. We'll then crunch the data and bring it here before us, so that we can have a good sense of how and why people are making the business decision that they do when they own or operate a business. So, today, I ask for your support, look forward to getting that back. We'll be bringing, hopefully, the final draft of it forward to everybody, and then getting it out there, so we can hear directly from L.A.'s businesses what L.A. city government needs to do better to create jobs here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And no more speakers in the queue on that item, item 14. Can we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti, you might as well, you should have just stayed up, because the next item is yours.
Just following on that, very briefly as well, thank you, Mr. President. The second motion from the Jobs Committee requests the CLA to work with our Community Development Department, Mayor's Office, the CRA, if it still exists in any way, and any other entities, to focus on small business creation and business cooperatives, and also focusing specifically on the idea of incubators. You know, I recently returned from New York City, where Mayor Bloomberg made it a priority to build the technology sector, and has increased fourfold the amount of money that's being invested in what's called now Silicon Alley in Manhattan. Similarly, here in Los Angeles, I've met with folks, we recently welcomed, and in the coming weeks, there's a new business incubator in Venice, in Hollywood, Mr. Labange's district, just across the street from mine, a group of Hollywood firms that are looking to incubate on Highland Boulevard, you know, four or five different locations in which you throw 20 companies together, brand-new companies, or 40 of them, and see what happens, to see if, you know, maybe half of them fail, maybe a third of them are relatively successful, and maybe two or three are the next big thing, just like Chicago has Groupon, just as Twitter was in San Francisco. What will that company be here in Los Angeles? What will that company be here in Los Angeles? Will it be in the entertainment sector? Will it be on the online and new media sector? Will it be in some other area? But what can we do to take proactive policy steps to aid those sorts of incubators and business cooperatives that can then help Los Angeles be positioned to not only recover, but to lead the recovery for the country? So I ask for your support. We have two that we've dealt with already, a clean tech incubator, which has kind of been in fits and starts, and a port tech LA incubator with the Port of LA. But we really need, I think, a citywide strategy, look at best practices, and see what we can do to import those ideas here and attract and grow those businesses that will create jobs for tomorrow in Los Angeles. Thank you. Oh, and one amendment to approve the motion to also include the Port of Los Angeles in the report back. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no speakers, other speakers in the queue, why don't we, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll go back to cards that were held by members from the public. And members, I think we can get through this quickly unless, so in fact, let me ask the members if they had any comment on items 2, 3, 4, and 11. If not, why don't we call those items now? And, Mr. City Attorney, is it possible that we can vote on them all at one time, or do we have to handle them separately?
They, you could take up the public comment all at one time, and then the items can be taken up, they could be voted on at the same time also.
Okay, so let's take up items 2, 3, 4, and 11. And I have cards on item 2, Sean Murphy, you're gonna be a busy boy today, and on item 3, Sean Murphy. On item 4, Blanca and Santos Villalobos. And on item 11, Sean Murphy. The Villaloboses, are you, get behind him.
Okay, sir.
Go on, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. New President, I am for item 2, I'm for item 3, and I'm waving my right on 11. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, happy new year.
Put the mic down, so we can hear you.
We are from District 11, and we are complaining, we are opposing the lien that we have on our property for fence, there was already, we already paid the bills.
Oh, you know what? Those two items, I thought we handled when we first got here. Items, in fact, they were to be received and filed. We've been notified that you have paid the bills, so there's no action. You guys are good to go.
Thank you very much. But, you know, I want to comment that if we did not come, this thing would have
No, it was, we were notified. So I knew last week that these two items were taken care of. But I'm glad that you came. It gives you an opportunity to see your own city council chambers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We have the, the fences.
Oh, it's already done. You did a good job.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that we need to come out here?
No.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, could I have somebody go over and chit-chat with them? Michael?
Thank you.
Now, with that said, we have items 2, 3, 4, and 11 before us. If we can open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, members, we also have items in our second, third grouping, items 18, 22, 24, 26, 28, 30, and 31, that I believe are all held by cards. So if we could take up item 18. And I'm trying to find the card. And the winner is John Walsh. John Walsh, item 18.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Walsh Confidential, or Facebooking at Miki Jackson, M-I-K-I Jackson. These are the removing various properties from reap. These are landlords who got punished, and now they're on the straight and narrow. So I think the city does an excellent job here, and so far, the meeting has gone very smoothly. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Seeing no speakers on the queue, open the roll? No, Mr. Williams, Dr. Williams, did you put in a card to speak on this item? Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us to what item?
Item 22, cost pleasure for cards.
There it is. Dr. Williams, John Walsh, Ivan Spiegel, please come forward. Mr. Spiegel? Dr. Williams?
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member, and we were clerked two years ago. What did the clerk do? Not much of anything, except attend 22 voters. Now, we're faced with another city clerk activity. Will Dunn do it better? I believe so. But the fundamental element is, get the clerk out of the way. They just cost a huge amount of money, more than the entire neighborhood council system. And remember that you have 95 neighborhood councils, usually 20 people volunteer their time and efforts, another, at least 22 people come to these meetings. So you have a good deal. I don't know why we need to have it. We've conducted our own neighborhood council elections. We will probably continue doing that for the next two years, and then we'll be clerked again. But Dunn is an alternative. If they want to do it, fine, we'll work with them. But we'll do it ourselves anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The arc of the covenant for some of us is the ballot box. That's what makes us different from Idi Amin, or anybody, the ballot box. And although Dunn has done a halfway decent job, they no longer have money. Well, I remember when we had the project area committees, the elections time for send it out to bid, I think maybe the Women's League of Voters might come in with a bid of under $1 million to do these elections, but please, don't have the neighborhood councils do their own voting. Because that, it's going to be a chaos with all these neighborhood councils. You need an authority. I would not want you to do the vote counting for the city council elections. Why should I want somebody I don't know to do the city council, the election? No. Absolutely, 100% no. The city, the neighborhood council vote woes. That's what it says in the newspaper. I'm telling you right now, the neighborhood council is totally ignored on most issues. Although you spent several, $50,000 to $100,000 on robo-calls, people at the Hollywood Neighborhood Council tell us the LAPD never called them when we had the mad arsonist, Hollywood arsonist. You have not treated the neighborhood councils with respect, and now you are trying to smother them, because you know if you allow the neighborhood councils to do their own election, there will be chaos, and that will give you an excuse to decertify neighborhood councils. Do not trust them. Only trust HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing has closed on this item. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I know a number of you have been hearing a lot from your neighborhood councils about the threat that they might have their terms extended until 2014, so I just wanted to briefly get you up to date on this. By previous action of the council, we defunded the clerk's participation in the elections for 2012. It was always the expectation that this council would come back with an alternative to that. But the city attorney felt compelled, because there was exclusive authority under statute for the clerk to run these elections, that when they were defunded, the city attorney proposed extending the terms until 2014. That was merely a function of the existing statute requiring that the clerk conduct those elections. So what this proposal suggests is that the city attorney be instructed to come back with an ordinance temporarily transferring authority for the elections from the city clerk's office to Dunn for the 2012 election cycle, so that elections can move forward in a more cost-effective way in 2012, and then we'll make a determination of whether that's the best long-term solution ongoing. But the idea here is to ensure that elections take place in 2012 for neighborhood councils throughout the city. So if we go forward with this ordinance, Dunn will then report back and provide us with a number of policy options that we can consider for those 2012 elections and ongoing. We will also, by then, have the benefit of the survey that the city clerk's office has been conducting of neighborhood councils about what the best way to conduct elections is. So what's before you today is a proposal to ask the city attorney to come back with an ordinance temporarily transferring authority for conducting elections from the clerk to Dunn, which will realize the substantial cost savings over having elections conducted by the clerk. So I respectfully ask for your support of that proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Alakon.
Council members, as the past Chair of the Education and Neighborhood Council Committee, I strongly advise that we not have the neighborhood councils conduct their own elections. Mr. Walsh was right, to the extent, and I agree with him, to the extent that there was massive confusion throughout the neighborhood council system. Mr. Krikorian was not present during those elections, but as Chair, I had to meander through all the complaints that emerged in the aftermath. I actually, I recognize that we have no budget to conduct proper elections, and the city clerk should not be strapped with doing something that they are not funded to do. But I also believe Dunn is not funded to conduct these elections. $150,000 for 90 elections, that's less than $2,000 per election. They cannot do a proper job. And so I agree with the city attorney's ordinance that suggests that we delay the elections for two years, rather than try to force this process anew onto a very complicated and vast system. This is, with all due respect to the chairman, he, you know, this is something that impacts every single one of us directly. And I strongly recommend that we take the, what I took as advice from the city attorney, they provided an option, and that is to delay the elections for two years. Yes, let's get a handle on it, let's try to get a budget that works, whether it be for Dunn or for the city clerk. But right now, without providing funding to Dunn to conduct a proper election, I think this would be a big mistake. And Mr. Walsh is absolutely right, that it might wreak havoc. And more importantly, I believe it could cause, we had some very serious problems, not with all the elections, but with some in particular. We had some potentially civil rights issues that were raised, and we could be muddled in the aftermath of litigation, should any one of these, or any number of these, have those kinds of problems. Most of them would do fine, but we have 90 of them. If you absolutely believe that none of them will make mistakes in an election process, then vote as Mr. Krikorian proposes. But I absolutely believe, as the past Chair of this committee, that there will be problems if you allow 90 independent elections to occur, each of which would establish their own set of rules and procedures. It would be a big mistake, it would be a big problem for all of us going forward, and I strongly recommend that. In fact, I would like to ask the city attorney to comment about the legality of delaying these elections for two years.
Good morning, Deputy City Attorney Darren Martinez. Yes, certainly, the current ordinance requires that the city clerk conduct elections every two years. Our office received this instruction to postpone the elections and delay conducting the elections, and that's how we've prepared this ordinance. Certainly, council has the flexibility to determine if elections are conducted this year or next year, but that authority is solely within council's discretion to determine what to do with respect to neighborhood council elections. Is there any further questions?
Mr. Rosendorf.
Excuse me, Mr. President, is Mr. Alakon making a motion to delay the elections for two years?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'm not sure he is. Keep it on the table.
I see no second for that. So, Mr. Rosendorf?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Could I ask the city clerk to come up, and Dunn had to come up? Got a few questions, got to get this understood. The 11th district has eight neighborhood councils. Two aren't affiliated with the city, because they want the right to sue, and they don't believe in the Brown Act. So those two, Brentwood and the Palisades, aren't part of my discussion here right now. But I respect all groups that come and meet with me, whatever they are, because that's democracy at its best. Of the six neighborhood councils that are affiliated with the city, five of them are into the cycle for elections in 2012. That is Mar Vista, and Venice, and Westchester, and Playa del Rey, Palms, and Del Rey. Those are the five. And they've come to me, my neighborhood council people, and said, "Look, I'm off the council in 2012, and there should be an election." And I wanted to be there until then, because I had a commitment to my community, but I don't intend to run this another time, and I don't want to be part of it. There's been a lot of the comments of some of the members. Others have said that democracy at its best is bringing in new energy and new ideas. We, as a council, sincerely believe in doing these elections with the utmost above-boardness, so that there's no hanky-panky. There were issues in some past neighborhood councils' elections, and I bless the whole concept of democracy and people's participation. You heard Mr. Alakon's comment, you heard Mr. Krikorian's comment. How many neighborhood councils are holding elections in 2012, if, you know, they could? Of the 90 that Mr. Alakon says are into it?
Well, to my knowledge, there aren't any official results until the city clerk is conducting a survey, and that'll express the desires of neighborhood councils throughout the city. We've been working with neighborhood councils in the short term to try to figure out what the right answer to this question is. One of the things that have surfaced is this notion of a public selection process that some neighborhood councils are actually pursuing. So there are some groups in the harbor, there may be some groups in the valley. Basically, they can run their own elections through a, basically, a caucus selection-type process. We'll promote that as a cost-effective way, because there's, you know, there's minimal involvement from the city, and by ordinance, neighborhood councils can run their own public selection process. That's distinct from an election where there are secret ballots involved. That's the main distinction between a public selection and an election process. But my sense is that should the council decide to make elections available, that most neighborhood councils would prefer that, because that's the most transparent and robust way to run a selection or a seating process for board members.
Sure. And Clerk, hi, good morning. Happy New Year to you. What is your survey telling you so far about how neighborhood councils?
The survey is, excuse me, the survey is currently in progress, so we need to have all the results in, before we compile the results and present them to you. It would be premature for us to bring results before you, before all the results are in, and we do not want to color the possibility that people might change how they vote on this election. In other words, we want to keep it pristine. So January 6 is the day So January 6 is the day that we set as a deadline, and shortly thereafter, we will present the entire report in totality to you.
Okay, so January 6, three days away. We'll get an analysis of that, and that will give us an understanding of what neighborhood councils are in what position about the results.
It will iterate to you exactly what they put.
And, Mr. Krikorian, does that make sense from your perspective, to wait for that? I mean, I'm obviously in favor of at least the five neighborhood councils in my part of the city that do want to have elections somehow do it at the cheapest, most efficient, effective way. Just curious.
Mr. Krikorian, respond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Those options will be among those that will be considered and reported back by Dunn as the ordinance is being prepared, with the benefit of the survey results that the clerk is now conducting. So none of those decisions need to be made today. What needs to be made today, and I appreciate Mr. Alakon's comments, but none of what he said has anything to do with what we're voting on today. What we're voting on today is simply to transfer authority to Dunn. No neighborhood councils are being, it's not being suggested that neighborhood councils conduct their own elections or anything like that. It's simply to transfer the authority to Dunn. Dunn will report to this council about the options that they recommend that we pursue for an election process. And by the way, in addition to that, every neighborhood council in the meantime has this selection authority if they choose to adopt it. So all of those options will still be before us, Mr. Rosendahl, and it'll be something that we'll need to consider, and again, especially in light of the benefit of the clerk's input when she's conducted, completed her survey.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Krikorian. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Englander.
Yes, I'm looking for a middle ground, and I'm not sure if there is one. I remember just going back when we, I've got, first of all, for the record, 14 certified neighborhood councils, the most in CD-12, the most in the city, and have a great relationship with 11 of them, no, I'm kidding, most, all of them, I think. I love them all equally, as my mother used to tell me. But having said that, I think if we postpone the election, I'm not sure if we can even do that for two years legally, but it also, just the last time around, all the problems that we had going back and forth between trying to understand the new systems with the clerk's office and Dunn, we had, most of our neighborhood councils were threatening to quit and resign because they didn't want to put up with it. These are volunteers, and it's a nightmare for them. And I literally, as the chief of staff, got on the phone and called virtually every single neighborhood council member and urged them to stay on and keep the neighborhood council system whole. And they did. I don't think they would stay on if we had to go through another system, wait another two years, and if we went to Dunn, Dunn does not have the staff. You got, you don't have the staff, BH, and you don't have the budget. That's just a reality. It's not that you guys can do something cheaper than the clerk's office. If we do the same thing, even if we change it slightly, it's going to cost the same amount of money. It's not the clerk's office isn't more expensive. They just do things correctly, certainly, and so does Dunn. But you've got a lot of other things, and accounting that's way behind, and trying to catch up with all the petty cash systems and all the complaint systems. Having to take this on, I don't know, is a solution. I'm not quite sure that we've really come up with all the alternatives yet, and so I'm not ready to say, yes, let's go ahead and extend it. I think Richard made some really great valid points that, you know, that's not the way to go, that we can't just send it back to Dunn, and that'll solve the problems and save all the money, and let everybody go ahead and write all their own rules. So I totally agree with that. And then, on the other hand, with the issues that Mr. Krikorian is bringing up and saying he's vetted, it's absolutely true. I don't think we can put this on for, off for another two years, though, and just simply push it off to another department and say, "The problem's solved, let's walk away." What are neighborhood councils thinking? What's the input from them? Have we surveyed them? Have we gone out to ask them what they would like to do? Do we have any true data back on what they've said across the board with all of them?
That's exactly what's in progress right now, is a very carefully thought-out and publicized survey that is, was disseminated to all the neighborhood councils. We also developed a separate survey for stakeholders.
What are we, what are we going to, what do we do to get that information back?
We are making personal phone calls to each neighborhood council. I think we can report that at least, like, 26 have responded, 29 have responded.
Is there a way to, if 29 out of, what, 92? 95?
They have had several reminders.
If there's a way to put this off before asking for a change in an ordinance, when we actually have some quantitative and qualitative information so we can make an informed decision, I would ask that we do that. Let's hear from our neighborhood councils and look at the actual information that's coming back from the surveys on what they would like to do. This is dealing with their lives. These are volunteers that are putting a tremendous amount of time in, and I have a feeling that they're going to be very frustrated when this body makes a decision, and they'll threaten to quit and not stick around. And so I think we need to make an informed decision on this one, it's just too big.
Mr. Englander, it is certainly a prerogative to do that, to wait until the survey results are in. We, after the deadline, you must allow us some time to correctly analytically prepare the report back to you, so that would be later in this month. But I just want to make one small point. The city clerk, according to the AD code, is required to run neighborhood council elections in even-numbered years. We were not funded to do that in this even-numbered year. Therefore, we are legally on the hook to still conduct those elections, and what is before you is simply an administrative move that will alleviate us from having to do the elections since we have no money to do them.
Well, I get that, but then who does them? We don't know.
We do not want to be in violation of the AD code of saying that we are responsible to do the elections.
I get that part, but then what happens?
Councilman, in terms of your question, what are the neighborhood councils thinking about, and what do they want? We conducted a parallel process to the city clerk's survey, so they took more of a quantitative approach, and we took a qualitative approach, and we launched a elections task force, where we worked pretty closely with neighborhood councils, and they're very much aware that everything around the city is driven by how much it's going to cost. So we worked through some alternatives, and we're prepared, under Councilman Krikorian's leadership, to come back and provide you with more of the nuts and bolts of how we would administer elections. Councilman Alakon, you're correct that we don't have any money to do this. I'm not begging to have elections back, but I recognize that elections, combined with outreach, is a critical component to the neighborhood council system. The lifeblood of neighborhood councils is all about participation, and if we lose this opportunity to get more people into the system, then I'm afraid that we're going to reach a tipping point where we have neighborhood councils start struggling. So we're prepared to present back a report based on the work that we've done with neighborhood councils, and the advantage that we have over the way we used to run elections, Councilman Alakon, you're correct that there were a lot of complaints. Basically, when we were running it back in the day, we were running 70 neighborhood council elections a year, all at random times. It was like, okay, neighborhood councils, what do you want to do? And we'll try to make it work. Well, we couldn't make it work under that kind of system. The advantage that we have now is that neighborhood, the city clerk, with the way that they organize elections, provided some greater structure. So they basically administered elections in nine regional hubs. That actually is in concert with some of the reforms that we've been working with Councilman Krikorian on, on how to create a sustainable neighborhood council system that is based on self-governance. But there's 95 of them, and I have eight field staff to basically support 1,800 board members. That's an impossible task. However, if we look at quitting these regional hubs that can provide administrative support, we can provide administrative support to them, they actually help each other. There are some best practices examples in the valley, for example, where neighborhood councils got together and helped each other administer elections. So that's, those are some of the directions that I'd be looking to move in. I believe that we could do it at a more cost-effective way than the city clerk. We're not bound by some of the rules and regulations that they are, because they administer municipal elections, but we will need some resources. You should know that we have about $120,000 that had been parked in our budget as part of last year's budget, that I'd like to start using immediately to begin a planning process so that we can cut down on the timeline, because we are rubbing against the wall of that 2012 deadline. And for public information, when we talk about 2012, we're talking about the fiscal year, 2012, which also runs into 2013. So the more speedier the council makes a decision, the more we'll be able to begin using some of those resources to begin the essential planning work that allow us to start implementing in a more timely basis.
Okay, Mr. Englander, I've been remiss in my duty, and I've let you go way over, so that I will pay closer attention to. That brings us to Mr. Lavange, who has given me his word. He asked one question.
You've got a quick question here. I'm a neighborhood council, and I don't have an election, but I still go on, and all of a sudden, there's just three of us in the room, and we're still getting the benefit of a grant from the city council. Is there a quorum number required for neighborhood councils, or could it be three people in a neighborhood? That's my question. And then you could get that later to Mr. Krikorian's committee.
I could address that question, Councilman. Each quorum requirement is driven by individual neighborhood council bylaws, so it varies. It depends on the size of the board. But basically, if they fall below quorum, there are a few ways that we could help them. One, our commission passed a, basically a remedy where we could assist the neighborhood council restore the board seats that are required, just to restore quorum, and then they could get back into running business. It's not the healthiest way for a grassroots democracy entity to work, but there are provisions to do that. But if they should fall below quorum, essentially, we would have to decertify them because they'd be in violation of their certification requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
I have a question to Councilmember Krikorian. So today, what we'd like to do, at the least, hopefully, is to clarify whether or not the city clerk's office is going to have to continue with the responsibility of elections of the neighborhood councils, right? As we just heard from the city clerk, that without the funds, they don't feel as though they can responsibly act in that capacity, correct? Okay, so either we restore funds to the city clerk's office in a timely manner, and then they can get to it.
No, sir, that's not an option, because we're, the exact reason why we were structured to do neighborhood council elections in even-numbered years is because we do municipals and odd. So in just a very few months, we're going to start gearing up for the 2013 municipals. So we do not have any time to do neighborhood council elections.
So practically speaking, practically speaking, it doesn't appear as though the city clerk, even if we gave them some funds, would have the capacity to follow through with that obligation. So at the least, what we should do today as a council is figure out a way to legally relieve the city clerk's office, but that still leaves our other responsibility of determining what is going to happen with neighborhood councils and elections going forward. Again, we just heard from Dunn. Dunn is saying that we've done it in the past, it wasn't pretty, it wasn't exactly what Dunn was set up to do, it sounds like, but however, they might be able to handle it if, in fact, we provide a structure and enough funding and enough proper communication up and down, all the way down to the street level of the neighborhood councils, to actually reinstitute Dunn being part of the neighborhood council elections. So where, Chairman of the committee, where are we at on the second half?
Well, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for an excellent summary of the issue. It is impossible for the clerk to conduct elections in 2012. It's impossible, and we've defunded it. Even if we were to fund it, they can't do it. So there are only really two options before the council today. One is to continue elections until 2014. The other is to transfer that authority to another entity, in this case, under my proposal, to the only entity that makes any sense, which is Dunn. If we do not do that, there will be no elections, and in my view, it will be the death of neighborhood councils, because to extend elections to 2014 is virtually universally opposed among neighborhood council board members and stakeholders. And Mr. Englander's asked for more information. I'm always interested in getting more input and more information. For two years, I've conducted an online survey, two citywide town halls, literally, you know, probably more than a dozen committee hearings on this issue, where we've gathered public input. The clerk is right now completing an extensive survey that she has done of the neighborhood councils. Mr. Kim and his staff have studied this extensively and have offered proposals that aren't finalized, but have offered generalized suggestions about how Dunn can do these elections at less than half of the cost of what we've already paid in the past for the clerk to run them. So we have done that work, but again, that's not before us today. What's before us today is whether or not you want to kill the 2012 elections. That's the question before you. So if we do not transfer this authority to Dunn today, we will act to kill the 2012 elections. Now, Mr. Englander talked about, you know, neighborhood council members as volunteers and being confused by changes and quitting. That certainly, you know, might be true, but I can guarantee one thing that's true. If you tell neighborhood council board members that whether they like it or not, they're on the hook for another two years, I can tell you that you will have extensive defections throughout this city, the neighborhood council movement, that we promised to the people of this city, the neighborhood, the commitment to neighborhood empowerment and democracy that we promised to the people of this city, when this city was at the verge of breaking apart. We will have abrogated that promise if we sabotage these 2012 elections and don't let them go forward. I say, let's continue with our commitment to neighborhood democracy, let's continue our commitment to neighborhood empowerment, let's transfer this authority to Dunn. When the survey is done, when the survey is completed by the clerk, we will have the benefit of all of that input, and we will be able to make the appropriate policy decision about whether or not to accept Dunn's proposal for how to run the elections. But today, we have to take this burden off the clerk's shoulders.
Okay, now, so the next steps should be, should we transfer it back to Dunn? But we, as a council, have to make a commitment to Dunn that we're not going to leave them hanging without the conclusion of what we're going to provide them with resources in a timely manner, so that they can actually do the best job that they possibly can put together to actually administer these elections. And if I understood correctly, it's in the latter part of 2012 and into the first part of 2013, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that being the case, how do we make that commitment, Mr. Chairman, about the timing of us concluding the details of that second half?
The way that we complete that is by having Mr. Kim come back to us with his proposal for how to conduct these elections, what funding changes he's going to need in his budget, and then we vote on it.
One last point, Mr. President. So that being the case, you need to be ready to let us know, either you're ready to let us know right now, or tell us within 30 days or something like that, that you will put together that outline for us, so we can debate that on the floor, and to whether or not we, as policymakers, agree with your plan. And then, once we see it, both the dollar numbers and also the timing of it, and whether you need personnel, or whatever the issues are in the details of it, we need to see that right away. Otherwise, whether you like it or not, we're going to continue to have meetings, but you're going to be left with a responsibility, just like the clerk's office was left with a responsibility, but the second half of it, the funding and all the other mechanisms weren't satisfied. So you're going to end up in the same boat as the clerk's office if you don't get that to us quickly.
Right, and we're prepared to do that, Councilman.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I was here when the neighborhood council system was first initiated, and I just would like to ask Mr. Kim and maybe this office of the city clerk if they can go back and look at the formative documents, because I recall that there was some long-term intention or goal of neighborhood councils becoming self-sufficient or self-reliant at some point. And in some cases, I think a number of them have already become 501(c)(3), so that they could go out, raise money, and apply for grants, and, you know, be able to take care of themselves. And I would like to know if you could do some research on that and take a look at, and just give me a report back in the council.
We would be glad to. I should mention, though, that pursuant to the recommendations of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, the idea of self-sufficiency among neighborhood councils is a Review Commission, the idea of self-sufficiency among neighborhood councils is a, comes under the administration of Dunn. However, the election part of it was specifically bifurcated out.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
It was specifically bifurcated out to be given to the clerk. So, I think the idea of self-sufficiency was not meant to be applicable to the election part.
I completely understand. Yeah, I do understand the separation.
And, Councilwoman, there is language in the ordinance that gives the option of neighborhood councils creating nonprofit entities, essentially creating further distance between them and the city. However, there is not one neighborhood council that has done that. There are examples of neighborhood councils who have partnered with nonprofit entities to do joint projects, but that's not something that I've promoted. You know, we're dealing with fiscal crisis and those kinds of things, so we've had to focus on our essential priorities, but there aren't any neighborhood councils that have exploited that particular ordinance language.
It also, excuse me, Councilmember, it also raises some significant legal problems when the entity itself also becomes a nonprofit. The most typical way that neighborhood councils do it is they're working with a friends-of-organization that's not necessarily comprised of the same members. Otherwise, you have some real severe legal problems if it's the same entity that's a nonprofit and the neighborhood council. So, there's some also practical restrictions to that notion of them becoming independent that exist.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. President, being a former member of the Electoral Charter Reform Commission, helped establish the neighborhood councils. Have we contacted Valley Alliance and the other groups that have emerged? What is their response to this?
Yes, we have, and they've taken positions to, for that the city should make elections available in 2012.
Okay. The cost, for the city clerk, what did it cost last time you ran elections?
We asked for 1.9, and we spent about 1.3, 1.3 million.
1.3 million.
That would be our 2010 cycle.
And when Dunn ran, what did it cost?
I'm hesitant to quote you what it was in the past because of the structure that it was. It was very costly, because 70 neighborhood councils running their own elections every year.
Right.
Is extremely costly. I would never propose to go back to those days. What I did include, at the mayor's request, in our budget, is a budget of approximately $650,000 to run neighborhood council elections. Again, I will come back and provide the council with more meat to the bone on that number, but I believe that borrowing from the ways that the city clerk was able to structure the neighborhood councils, elections in nine regional hubs, that that's a more cost-efficient way for elections to be administered. Plus, to do it every other year, as opposed to every year, is going to be further savings. And I would look to continue some of the practices, but also adapt it to the unique needs of grassroots democracy.
And the city clerk did a great job through the specific process of doing legitimate elections, with, make sure there's no protest, but understand there's lawsuits that are now generating from certain neighborhood councils regarding the process. Where's the money going to come from? If it's 600 or a million, do we have a fund for those dollars to fund that?
Not currently in our budget. That would have to be something that the council would have to deliberate on.
Okay, then I ask for our city administrative officer, if he can come forward and tell us where the money is going to come from for this process. Because this man controls the dollars, and since we're talking about funding for an election process, in addition to the dollars that go to the neighborhood councils for their operations, can you just tell us where we're going to get the money to make this happen? And Mr. Englander earlier mentioned we're 70-plus million in debt this fiscal year and 250 next fiscal year. And I want to continue neighborhood councils and support them at the same time. I know Dunn's staff has been cut. The bottom line is, where are we going to get the money if we're going to do this? Or how are we going to, let me ask you this, how are we going to do this? How are we going to find and make it happen?
We don't have the funding to pay for this. As you know, we already are facing a 70-plus million dollar deficit this fiscal year. Our office is preparing an analysis as to how that's going to be handled. It's most likely to impact every department throughout the city, and we do services across the board. Our recommendation at this time is that the funding come from, if, the neighborhood councils directly. As you know, each neighborhood council receives $50,000 of funding that they could spend at their discretion, and this is germane to their overall purpose, and so it would be appropriate to have this election paid for out of those dollars.
I think that's been cut to 45,000, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
But what's the recommendation?
40,500 is the current allocation.
40,500? Was it going to remain at 40,500, or was there going to be another adjustment for next fiscal year?
That's something the council will have to decide on as part of next year's budget.
Because the budget recommendation, the mayor's already, they're processing it now.
They are, yes.
But have there been any recommendations on the funding?
Not yet.
Okay, so the mission would be, then, to use funds that neighborhood councils would use for their activities, take a portion of those funds to help fund the elections? And they would then decide how much they're going to spend on each of the neighborhood councils? Or would that money go to Dunn, and Dunn would coordinate, which would be taking away money that we promised neighborhood councils for their community programs?
Well, I would recommend having it coordinated through a department.
So, the bottom line is, we have no funds.
Mrs. Zine, ask your last question. You're over.
Okay, this is my last one.
Your time is over.
So, the bottom line is, there's no money?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Englander. Oh, Mr. Alacon, that's my mistake.
The council members, I don't have a problem. If you want to go down the path of Dunn, I think it would be an onerous task to place on Dunn, and given the previous experience, and I know that he wouldn't do it the same, that Mr. Kim wouldn't do it the same, but the fact is, it's an onerous task. We don't have the money, and the proposal before you doesn't contemplate the money. And it's probably going to be at least a half a million dollars to run an effective system. And where are you going to take it from, the neighborhood councils? They're going to scream about that. So, here's what I suggest. The proper way to budget for the election is to go through the budget process. I think Mr. Englander is absolutely correct in saying, we don't have enough information to make the final decision on how Dunn is going to do all this in a cost-effective and efficient way, an effective way. Because more important than getting the elections done is to do them right. And if we rush this without knowing what our budget is, without having decisions made on our budget, I fear that they will not, that Dunn will not be empowered to do them right, and there will be mistakes, and it will haunt us, as they haunted me when I took the chairmanship of the committee and had to deal with all the complaints. For example, we don't even have an appeal process in place for such an election, and that's where this thing went haywire. Hundreds of appeals were registered, and it was a disaster. We've had a period of calm with the neighborhood councils, and I believe it's largely because we had effective elections. And Dunn was not doing those elections, because that's not what they do. What Dunn will end up doing is spending all of their time on election processes and appeals. What I would propose is that we do this the way we should do this, to budget it in the budget process. I don't have a problem with taking the authority away from the city clerk, because they're not funded, and they can't do it anyway. So, let's, we can do that today. I have no problem with that. But let's extend the election for six months to give Dunn better time, but more importantly, to give our budget process the opportunity to fund it the way it should be funded. And we'll conduct the elections in six months, not have to take the money from the neighborhood councils, or if we do, it'll be as a result of a budget discussion. And let's just, the middle ground, Mr. Englander, that I'm proposing is to agree with Mr. Kukorian to take the authority away from the city clerk, to direct Dunn to come back with their proposal as to how they're going to do that and what their budget is, but that we delay the elections for six months to enable. And by the way, the municipal elections do not interfere with Dunn's activity, although they do interfere with the clerk's activity, so it shouldn't be that much of a problem. So, I would urge that, I move that we delay the elections for six months, and other provisions of the ordinance relative to the city clerk's authority be approved.
Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, is there a second?
Maybe Mr. Englander is seconding this. I don't.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, so, we have a motion out there with no second. Mr. Englander, the time is now yours.
Okay, so, my only couple concerns left, from what I've heard in the discussion, are, number one, we're not voting on, as it was suggested, to kill the elections for this year, period. That's not what's before us. As I read, what's before us is to transfer the authority. And I understand if we didn't transfer the authority, we'd be in violation of municipal or administrative code. I get that part. I don't think, and I also don't think we're making an informed decision, as we were told, and I appreciate that there's been dozens of meetings, a lot of outreach, and a lot of surveys done, that the informed decision that I'm asking is the proposal that Dunn is working on to put together, how you would assume the elections. What does that mean? So, my only question is, when do you hope to have that? If you're going to assume this, when is that proposal going to be completed and submitted to the commission and the committee and the council on how much money, how it's going to work? And we're still looking at doing it this year. When is that proposal going to be done?
I think it would be possible for us to go through committee and return to the council within four to six weeks.
So, my only question would be that if we can hold, and that's what I would like to do, and I'm not asking for the votes necessarily. Where I'm coming from, the informed decision would be that we put all that together and vote. Once we have a proposal, we have the cost estimates, we've identified where the funds are going to come from, we still have time in four weeks to come back and remove that. Once we remove that procedure and switch it over to the department from the clerk's office, we're basically sending a message, I don't think we should put these off at all. I think you're absolutely right. Mr. Kukorian is absolutely correct that we should not put these off. We should have them this year. We will lose neighborhood councils if we don't. But by just taking the authority away, it jeopardizes putting them off for a couple of years, because we're in limbo. We don't have yet the proposal worked out or the cost. I think we should bring this back altogether as one package and do it correctly and transparently. That's what I would ask, and that's why I'll be voting no, but not because of all the work that's been done, but just from my perspective and the feedback I've gotten from the 14 neighborhood councils in my district. And if we can get it back in four weeks, that'd be great. I'd love to vote on that and say, this is a great plan, it's been vetted, and we can fund it.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian, to hopefully close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, colleagues, what's before us today is not that plan. That plan will be coming back. What's before us today is the transfer of authority. Without that transfer of authority, the statutes of this city will not allow elections to take place, because if the clerk can't do it, there is no one to do it. We must take this action today. We must transfer this authority. The department will come back through the ordinary budget process, and Mr. Alacon's right, you make budget decisions during the budget process. That's right. Not during, you know, issues like this about who has authority. You make it during the budget process. They're going to be coming back with a budget proposal that details this. They're separately going to be coming back with a proposal about how best to conduct these elections. And I agree with Mr. Englander that we want to have that full debate. That's not the debate for today. That's the debate for when the department has the authority and they come back with their proposal for how to do it. So, I respectfully ask for your I-vote on transferring the authority today from the clerk to Dunn for the 2012 neighborhood council election cycle.
Oh. I didn't hear you. You seconded, Mr.? Okay, so then, the first vote is on, Madam Clerk, on what? It's my understanding that Mr. Englander seconded Mr. Alacon's motion.
Excuse me, council members. One of the, Deputy City Attorney Darren Martinez, one of the difficulties with Councilmember Alacon's motion at the current time is the ordinance states that elections are to be conducted every six months, and one of the clarifications, I'm sorry, that the elections must occur every two years, every even-numbered year. And I understood that you were suggesting that it be postponed for six months, which would be difficult under the current ordinance. I didn't know if you were asking us to make a motion to do that or instructing our office to amend the ordinance that we've prepared. And it would probably help me understand a little bit better if you maybe gave me a little bit more direction on where you were going in postponing the election.
Well, every two, I believe the statute is.
Every two years.
Every two years, but that's 2012.
Correct.
Six months would still be 2012. I don't know that we'd be in violation of the ordinance.
Except that the ordinance says, the clerk, if you break down the ordinance, the ordinance says the clerk shall conduct them, and the clerk shall conduct them in April, May, and June of every even-numbered year. So, you'd have to alter two aspects of the ordinance.
So, we have to change the ordinance. Change the ordinance just to allow a postponement of six months? Yes.
And as a point of clarification, you don't have an ordinance before you today. You're simply instructing the city attorney to prepare it. It will come back to council for another vote.
Okay, so now, Mr. Alacon, do you still want to get a vote on your motion? Or? Okay, so, Madam Clerk, what's first?
First would be Mr. Alacon's motion to authorize the city attorney to prepare the, to instruct the city, to, excuse me, to request the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to transfer the authority from the clerk to Dunn to conduct the elections, also for Dunn to report back with the proposal and to delay the elections for six months.
Okay, so I'm assuming Mr. Alacon is asking for an I-vote, Mr. Kukorian is asking for a no vote.
I am asking for a no vote.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, 10 noes.
That brings us to?
That brings us to the communication from the Chair of the Arts Parks Neighborhoods Committee, which is to request the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance to transfer authority for conducting the neighborhood council elections from the city clerk.
Okay, open the roll. Yes.
I request to bifurcate the question of the authority relative to the clerk and the direction to authorize Dunn. You bifurcate the question?
I object.
Object to bifurcation?
Yes.
Wait, wait, now, come on, we're in the voting process now. We voted on your motion, Mr. Alacon, and it was defeated. Now, Mr. Kukorian is requesting a straight vote on his motion, and I think that that's the fair way to move forward.
That would be a new way to move forward, yes, because typically, bifurcation is a matter of court. It gives me the opportunity to vote yes on the part that I like and no on the part I don't like. And that's common courtesy.
City attorney, common courtesy could be debated. Anyway, city attorney, what is your thoughts?
There actually, there should be then, if his motion to bifurcate is seconded, then there should be a vote on whether to bifurcate. And then, if it succeeds, then there'll be two votes. If it does not succeed, then there'll be a vote on the communication.
Okay, then let's go through this exercise. There's been a motion to bifurcate. We've got a second, so the vote right now is on if we will bifurcate or not, right? Mr. Kukorian is requesting a no vote, Mr. Alacon requesting an I-vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, eight noes.
All right, now, Mr., we have now before us the, Mr. Kukorian's motion. Open up the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Eyes have it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is 24, I believe. We have cards. I've got John Walsh, if you could come forward, and my dear friend Arnold Sacks, if you could come forward. John, Mr. Walsh, I've been informed, you have one minute.
Okay. There's nothing I can't accomplish in one minute.
I believe that, sir. Go right ahead.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Googling at Walsh Confidential. This concerns school projects.
What's next?
We'd like to point out that Logan had a school project, I believe it's on here, where they wanted to build a building. We had Mr. Garcetti refuse to issue demolition permits, and he told LAUSD he wouldn't do it unless they built a senior citizens center there. That's a crime. LAUSD told Mr. Garcetti, you're accusing, you're asking us to commit a crime.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
I'm talking about the schools and the construction.
It's not germane to this item.
Mr. Walsh, you're a teacher, you're very creative, and you got mastered the English. Stop his clock. Come up with a way to make this germane, if not.
There is a thread here. Okay, I understand Carmen Trutanich, I understand what's happening. In fact, I'm going to the FBI on the Garcetti thing, and I just want to say, I don't know, is Mr. Parks isn't here? How is his health? I'm interested in his health. He hasn't been here for two weeks.
That has nothing to do with this item.
Yeah, but it has to do with.
Thank you, thank you, your time is, his time's done. Mr. Sacks? In fact, members, what we're going to do, we've got, we're on item 24. Arnold, we're going to roll right into item 26, and we'll vote if the city attorney allows, we'll vote on 24 and 26. Arnold, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Item 24 refers to the LAUSD design and construct street and sidewalk improvements for seven schools. First, my concerns are, you had before you regarding budget changes, that the public would own the sidewalks, as one of the ideas floated by, from the Budget and Finance Committee. So if the schools are, if the city is building the school sidewalks and then going to be reimbursed, who eventually will own the sidewalks? Because you want the public to pay for sidewalk. You have an instance with CRA using money to improve sidewalks for the new museum, the Broad Museum being built downtown. So why isn't CRA funding being used to build these sidewalks, many might which be in CRA districts? And you also have 1290 funds, which coincide with CRA funding. Why isn't 1290 fund being used to build these sidewalks instead of using LAUSD money? They have enough trouble building schools and keeping them within budgets on that. And then you also have the situation with the LAUSD and the park fiasco that occurred in the 12th, I believe, in Ms., in Honest Jen Perry's district. The culmination being, what exactly are the policies between the city and the LAUSD to be more coherent for the public to understand? That's item number 24.
Just go right into item 26.
Item 26, I held quickly, and, you know, I didn't get to speak on your motion that Mr. Kocorian made regarding the arts in the city of L.A. And I would have said, the fact that he's making a motion, or, what was it? His statement regarding the arts in L.A., how would that apply to putting more money into the art education policy to the school? But what was interesting in that discussion on item 37 was the fact that the gentleman who was sitting at the center table mentioned that this program would be creating $200,000 in transit occupancy tax from the hotels, from people staying here.
Mr. President, he's not talking about the National Endowment for the Arts grant?
I'm talking about, well, the use of transit occupancy tax is used to support art programs, Mr. City Attorney. And maybe if you listened to other meetings, you'd understand that, but we're not going to go there. So the fact that there's $200,000 being created in transit occupancy tax, hopefully, what percentage of that is coming from the rich Carlton, which isn't paying transit occupancy tax? And how are these grants, are they making up the funding that is being lost by the city council waiving the transit occupancy tax in some of the new hotels and the construction going on? Because sooner or later, the debt is going to be greater for art endowments than can be collected from different grants. And how will the art programs be funded then? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we open the roll on those items? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so the next two items are, are they 30 and 31?
Twenty-eight, 30, and 31.
And I see, 28 is, so if I could get Dr. Williams, I know he's got cards on a couple of them. If you could please come forward, Dr. Williams? And let's lump those three items together. Doctor, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'll pass on 30, so you can go directly to that. So focus, the Harvard Department. The Harvard Department is in charge of the Port of L.A. Great. The question is, what do they do? Tomorrow, you're going to be considering another issue with the Harvard Department, and what do they do? And how much does it cost? The Port of L.A. is one of the largest in the world. We need to find out what they are doing. We need to have a program to show, how much do they actually generate per square foot of port, of square foot of warehouses, simple, factories? All of these things need to be done, because SCAGS is projecting that they're going to double in their throughput, which means that they must become much more efficient than they are now. In Hong Kong, I was part of a project where we were moving 1 million containers a year on 1,000-foot berth, one. Mayor's Sealand know how to do their job. Maybe the Port of L.A., the Harvard Department, needs to come up with a plan showing as to how many jobs, how much money, how many berths, how many containers are actually being used in a productive manner. Right now, they are inefficient, they need to improve greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. I've been informed you have one minute, Mr. Sacks.
I do believe I do have one minute, thank you. I held item 34, I believe, 31, regarding the gateway to LAX, and depending on which way you're looking at it, either the airport is the gateway into LAX, Long Century Boulevard, or aviation, where the aviation rail line, the Green Line, or in some cases, the Crenshaw Line will cross, would be the gateway to LAX. So years ago, I believe, a couple of years ago maybe, Councilman Rosendahl passed a resolution, asked for a resolution regarding some funding for a study at the aviation station regarding a transit-oriented village. So I believe it was $50,000. Now, in the realm of things, $50,000 is chump change, but here you're asking for a study into the gateway of LAX. What happened to the transit-oriented village that was going to be part of the study for $50,000?
Thank you. Seeing no speakers in the queue, can we open the roll on these items? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What's next, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for post and a referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, members? Mr. Labange?
As you know, there was a, arrest has been made on a person, they've committed over, up to 50 acts of arson. And there's close work between the Los Angeles County and city officials, and we'll have more information later, but I just want to say, the due diligence of the neighborhoods, awareness, all of it helped bring it to fruition. Thank you.
Let's just choose our words carefully until.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
The plane is up, but it hasn't been landed yet. Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to wish all my colleagues in the whole city a great new year, looking forward to a productive year as a council.
Any other announcements? Well, then, I guess this would be an appropriate time for me to announce that, members, probably within the next week, I'll be communicating with you. We're working on some suggestions that would try to make our presentations part of the week go smoother and maybe even a little faster. So as soon as we work these kinks out, I'll be in communication with you. Mr. Weezer, did you have an announcement?
Adjourning motion.
Okay, members, let's rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Marcella Calderon. She passed away after a long and courageous battle with cancer. She was a product of the Montebello Unified School District and had been an active leader in local and state politics for over two decades. Marcella Calderon was the first Latina to serve the Montebello Unified School District and as its board president. As a parent volunteer, she played an integral part in helping obtain the largest school bond measure in the district's history, helping generate millions of dollars to build schools and modernize the schools in the district. As a board member, she was committed and dedicated to raising student achievement and making sure the school district continued to be fiscally solvent and accountable to the taxpayers of the community. She is survived by her husband, former state assembly member Tom Calderon, and their two children, Cameron and Victoria. And Marcella will be remembered as a committed, committed leader, relentless advocate for education, a loving wife and mother. The family is making arrangements for a public celebration of life to be held next week, and details will be forthcoming. When I heard about the news, I was deeply saddened, not only to hear that a great educator had passed away, but someone who certainly had had in her the passion and the commitment to change the lives of many of our young people. As board president, myself, for the Unified, we often discussed, talked about ways we can improve children's lives, and she will certainly be missed by all of us. And I'm sure there are people in this chamber who will also like to, why don't we do, all members, but I know as well.
I'd like to be a co-signature, which you would probably, everybody from Sacramento.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I didn't know that. You almost made me fall in my chair when you said that, Mr. Weezer, I had not heard. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Keretz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Ray Mitchell, a friend of mine who passed away on December 24th at the age of 90. For decades, Ray Mitchell was a constant presence at West Hollywood civic events and democratic clubs and other activist endeavors. I knew her for many years, and I was proud and impressed by her steadfast commitment to the community and her involvement up to the time of her death. She also had an indirect but more crucial impact on my own family's well-being, in that her daughter Wendy was the doctor at Children's Hospital who took care of my doctor, my daughter Rachel, when she was seriously ill and paralyzed, and was largely responsible for her miraculous recovery, which I think was partly because she couldn't see her mother's friend's daughter in the hospital in that condition without finding some way to resolve it. I know that Ray's humane compassionate sensibility continues on, because it was powerfully evident in the grace and compassion shown by Wendy, and I will always thank her daughter and the mother for that wonderful gift of healing in my family. I believe that Ray touched many lives directly through her activism, but indirectly through her example, which taught countless people about kindness, caring, and determination. She was born on April 28th, 1921. She's survived by daughters Wendy and Barbara Mitchell, daughter-in-law Andrea Horwatt, son-in-law Bill Pardue, grandchildren Becky and Matt Pardue, as well as numerous nieces and nephews. She also leaves Rick Rickles, her longtime companion, and many friends in the West Hollywood area and elsewhere. A memorial for her will be held this Saturday, January 7th, at 3:00 p.m. in the Plumber Park Community Center in West Hollywood at 7377 Santa Monica Boulevard. And instead of flowers, she requests that donations be made to either the neurology research program at Children's Hospital, which is directed by her daughter Wendy, the interim program, which is a mental health program directed by her daughter Barbara, National Council of Jewish Women, or the Nature Center at Franklin Canyon. And she will be sorely missed by everyone who knew her.
Members, any others? Seeing none, this concludes the meeting. This meeting is now adjourned. I want to thank the city clerk, city attorney, for helping me get through on my maiden voyage. Thank you. See you tomorrow, same time, same place.